As Precinct Six is the caucus complete?
Oh, okay. All right, great.
Good evening. My name is Tom Brady. I am the newly-elected Walpole Town Moderator. Welcome to the 2015 Fall Town Meeting. There being a quorum of more than seventy-six Town Meeting members present, please come to order. Does the Clerk attest to the return of the warrant? He does. Please rise for the -- Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. Good evening. Some acknowledgements and thank yous. Thank you to the Walpole League of Women Voters for taking account coming in. Thank you to Walpole Community Television. Thank you to Clara April and Cindy Berube for their work at Town Hall in preparing for this evening. And thanks to Jim DiTillio for providing technical expertise. Thank you also to Mary Matali for getting the National Audits Society to help us out with refreshments at the break. I would like to introduce the individuals sitting at the front table. On the far left, Chairman of Board and Selectmen, Mr. Cliff Snuffer. Alana Quirk, Town Council. And --
Jim Johnson.
Jim Johnson, the Town Administrator. I apologize, Jim. Down front is Dan Bruce, the Chairman of the Finance Committee, and Josette Burke. We have some resolutions tonight for deceased members of the Town of Walpole. What I'd like to do is to read the resolutions, and then we'd all stand and have a moment of silence at the end. So the first one is for Mr. David Leto. Resolve that we, the representative Town Meeting members, inscribe upon the record of the Fall Town Meeting of October nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen, our recognition and sincere appreciation of the contributions rendered by the late David F. Leto, who passed away on May first, two thousand and fifteen, as a member of the Planning Board from nineteen ninety-five to nineteen ninety-nine, as a member of the Adams Farm Committee from two thousand to two thousand and fifteen, and as an original representative Town Meeting member from nineteen seventy-one to nineteen seventy-two and from nineteen ninety-three until his untimely passing. And further, in acknowledgement of the town's loss, we request the moderator to observe a moment of silence in Dave's memory, and further, that the Town Clerk be instructed to send a copy of this resolution to Dave's family. Resolve that we, the representative Town Meeting members, inscribe upon the record of the Fall Town Meeting of October nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen, our recognition of sincere appreciation of the contributions rendered by the late Sharon Wasson, who passed away on May twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen, as a member of the Planning Board from nineteen eighty to nineteen eighty-two, and from nineteen ninety-four to nineteen ninety-five, as a representative Town Meeting member from nineteen eighty to nineteen eighty-four. And further, in acknowledgement of the town's loss, we request the moderator to observe a moment of silence in Sharon's memory, and further, that the Town Clerk be instructed to send a copy of this resolution to Sharon's family. And third, Mr. Tom McCormick. Resolve that we, the representative Town Meeting members, inscribe upon the record of the Fall Town Meeting of October nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen, our recognition and sincere appreciation of the contributions rendered by the late Thomas McCormick, who passed away on August twenty-ninth, two thousand and fifteen, as a member of the Finance Committee from nineteen seventy-two to nineteen seventy-four, as a member of the Board of Selectmen from nineteen seventy-five to nineteen seventy-eight, and as a representative Town Meeting member from nineteen seventy-five to nineteen ninety-two. And further, in acknowledgement of the town's loss, we request the moderator to observe a moment of silence in Tom's memory, and further, that the Town Clerk be instructed to send a copy of this resolution to Tom's family. If we could all rise for a moment of silence? Thank you. And also, at this time, like to recognize and welcome new Town Meeting representatives. When I do state your name, if you could stand, please, and welcome to Town Meeting. Mr. John M. Curley. Breyer Hasenjager. Joseph Monahan. Ross Dotty. Robert O'Leary. Deborah Driscoll. David Luongo. Edward Lynch. Harry Klow, Jr. Michael Tealy. Thomas Brown. Robert Donellen. Also with the caucuses in Precinct One, Rachel McMulligan. And Precinct Four, John Robinson. And Richard LaRonde from Precinct Seven. Thank you all for your service. The League of Women Voters also would just like me to remind you that the Walpole-Westwood-Dedham League of Women Voters invites you to attend an informational forum tomorrow evening, October twentieth, at seven p.m., in the community room of the Walpole Public Library to address the proposed new gas pipeline slated to be constructed in Walpole and surrounding towns. These lines are part of a large energy infrastructure to be installed throughout the Commonwealth. The energy needs of the area, best practices to fulfill those needs, and related issues will be presented. Then next Tuesday, October twenty-seventh, from seven to eight, at the Town Hall, the Board of Selectmen will host Spectra Energy, the company charged with building the pipelines, so that Walpole citizens can be updated on the plans and ask questions which may come. Funding for this pipeline project will come from electricity ratepayers across the state, so we are all stakeholders. As you know, Ron Fusile will be retiring in December, and Ron is asked to say a few words to the Town Meeting members. How could I change my mind? And the other thing is, if we only had shot on moderators, I might have stayed longer, but I always have to adjudge the mic. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to take a moment just to thank you, the present Town Meeting members, and all the past ones that I have served with over the years, for the Selectmen who have allowed me this honor to assist the moderators, Steve Sullivan, Jim Brady, John Rockwood, and of course, the present Tom Brady, not related. From my catbird seat, I have experienced and relished and enjoyed every moment. My wife, Beverly, and I moved here with our children to be closer to the ocean. That was my first surprise. In nineteen seventy-five, I was elected to Town Meeting with very little concept of the role that you play in the governance of the Town of Walpole. You are the consent part of government and the representative conscience of the Town Meeting and the inhabitants of the town. You have, on occasions, reached out beyond Walpole when you felt it necessary. Many nights, I have sat here and wanted to get involved in the discussions and the fray. It was not easy for me to just sit here and listen, but I felt it was important, my silence. Only if it affected the Town Clerk's office would I rise to try to explain why a certain was -- something was occurring. So after twenty-one years as Town Clerk and a like amount as a Town Meeting member, again, I want to thank and not overstay my welcome. You've allowed me this privilege. I've got to know many of you personally. It's rewarding and humbling, and I thank you. We thank you, Ron. We also have here tonight Senator Jim Timmeltie. We'd like to say a few words for you. Senator Timmeltie?
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator, and congratulations to you on your new endeavor. As the state senator from the town and also a resident, I just wanted to wish the legislative body very good luck tonight. Should there be a question that you have relative to anything in state government, please feel free to call me at the office or indeed at the House on Borough Street. I'd be more than willing to answer and help you with any one of your issues. And then, as a very special appearance today, I wanted to thank the Clerk for his wonderful years of service. He's been a very special friend, a mentor when I first got on the job, explaining election laws to me and how its impact on the town and the Commonwealth. And he is the consummate professional in that very important job as parliamentarian, but he does it with class, and he does it with a keen sense of humor and a biting wit, if you've ever been the subject of those barbs, as I have, you learn to appreciate. So I wish you wonderful, wonderful success in your new chapter and your new inventor. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
And we also have here tonight Congressman Stephen Lynch, who'd like to say a couple of words. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I realize Cliff Snuffer told me that there's thirty-four articles on the warrant, so I'm going to really try to be very, very brief. Just a quick update on what's going on in Washington. As you may know, there's a logjam of sorts. Speaker John Boehner announced his retirement, that he was going to step down several weeks ago. Since then, no single candidate has been able to get two-hundred-and-eighteen votes or a commitment thereto, so that we're without a successor right now. In the meantime, we have several deadlines in Congress. One is the lack of a budget. We have had a brief extension, what they call a continuing resolution, to try to continue the government funding for several months. We have a deadline on the debt limit, which is the mechanism by which we fund a lot of the government and issue new debt and cancel old debt. As well, we also have a major highway bill that needs to be passed as well. So recently, we passed a ninety-day extension on the highway bill, but as you may guess, that's not a very, very long period of time. For any governor, including Governor Baker here in Massachusetts, a ninety-day extension on funding on federal highway projects and on local and state projects is not particularly helpful. So we need to come to a resolution in order to actually try to issue a six-year transportation bill that'll allow us to actually tackle some of the larger, long-term projects that are ongoing in the state. We have an ongoing situation in Afghanistan. I know the President last week announced that rather than draw down completely, he is maintaining the level of forces at nine-thousand-eight-hundred troops in Afghanistan through two thousand and sixteen, instead of drawing them down as previously announced. I'll be in Afghanistan again in several weeks to look at that new configuration. The drawdown is supposed to be pushed back to five-thousand-five-hundred troops by January of two thousand and seventeen. So we'll keep an eye on that, obviously. The Export-Import Bank is also up on the agenda. The Export-Import Bank allows us to export products made in the United States overseas, most significantly on issues like aircraft from Boeing, turbines and engines from General Electric, and other products that are made in the United States. If there are big purchase orders by foreign governments, we often finance those at interest to allow foreign countries to purchase, to make major purchases of U.S. products and services. So last month, the Exum Bank closed its doors because it was not reauthorized by Congress. As a result, we're losing now a lot of competition to foreign countries like China, like France, like Britain, and India, where their Export-Import Banks are making it cheaper to actually purchase their goods. So we need to come to a -- and by the way, the Export-Import Bank actually returns money to the United States taxpayer, about three-quarter of a billion dollars last year. So it's not costing us money, but it is contrary to some of the ideology that some members of Congress have. So we're having a difficult time in getting that reauthorized, but I know that there are some leaders in Congress on both sides that are trying to get that done. So that remains on the congressional calendar. The Town of Walpole has a tremendous, a long and strong history of military service, and that is reflected in one of the great things that I get to do every year, which is to nominate young men and women to our military academies. And I think it's certainly a first for me, but this year, we have, from Walpole, two brothers who are actually at the Naval Academy at the same time, both Jack and Daniel O'Hare from Twelve Bridgeview Circle. Their parents are Tom and Noreen O'Hare. They're graduates of Catholic Memorial High School. So Jack is a member of the class of two thousand and seventeen, and Daniel is actually a member of the U.S. Naval Academy class of two thousand and fifteen, so he'll be graduating this year. They will follow Joe Gallagher, U.S. Naval Academy, class of two thousand and fourteen. He lives at thirty-seven -- oh, he lived at Thirty-Six Eldor Drive. His parents are Michael and Elaine Gallagher, a graduate of Walpole High School. And he followed Brendan Mills, U.S. Naval Academy. There's a pattern here of Naval Academy graduates from Walpole. He was a class of two thousand and ten, went to Noble in Greenow, and his parents are Walter and Eileen Mills. And they follow Joe DeSantis, who's a graduate of the U.S. Merchant Marine Academy, class of two thousand and nine. Very, very strong reasons to be very proud of your school system here, and also proud of the families and the sons and daughters who are willing to serve. Couple of things, just in housekeeping. Megan Aldridge, who served my office for many years, a Walpole High School graduate, her mom, Liz, her dad, Billy Aldridge, still live here in Walpole. She handled a lot of the town issues for Walpole for me. She was recently hired away from my office by Mayor Martin Walsh in Boston. He could pay her a lot more money than I could. But to our great fortune, we're able to bring on John Murphy, who's sitting in the front row here. He is the son of Tom and Teresa Murphy. They live on Main Street. He grew up in Walpole. United States Army veteran, infantry, served in Afghanistan, and so he will now take over the duties that Megan Aldridge once served on behalf of the Walpole regional town issues for my office. And also, I would like to join with Senator Timmeltie. On certain special occasions, I'm able to offer congressional, special certificates of congressional recognition. And I would like to do this this evening, very quickly, to Ron Fusile for his wonderful, wonderful work on behalf of the Town of Walpole. And this certificate of special congressional recognition presented to Ron Fusile in recognition of your twenty-one years of loyal service and dedication to the Town of Walpole, Massachusetts as Town Clerk, dated October nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen, offered by Stephen F. Lynch, Member of Congress. And I also have a great set of congressional cufflinks that I hope you have occasion to wear, but thank you very much for being part of Walpole Town Meeting. This is what it's all about. I am thoroughly honored, and I consider it a great privilege, to represent the Town of Walpole in the United States Congress. And I work for you. I don't forget that. And you know, you've got a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful town here. You care about the things that really matter. You care about your kids. You care about our veterans. You care about our seniors. And I think you're a wonderful reflection of what America's all about. I really do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Congressman Lynch. Okay, now on to some procedural rules. RTM members are only supposed to be sitting in the front up before the first break. If you're not an RTM member, you need to move to the back. We also, as was voted upon in the Spring Town Meeting regarding the microphones, we're going to keep that still in place. Those wishing to speak on article, please come to the microphone, right up at the front. I'll go on a first-come, first-turn basis. I'll alternate back and forth. When there's no more line, I'll see if there's anybody else that'd like to talk, ask that person to come up if so, and then we'll go to a vote after that. Moving the question needs to be done from the microphone as well. If you have a point of order, make the point of order from your seat, and then come up to the mic and explain your point of order. We do have six tellers tonight. On the right on this side, Mr. Al Tedesco, Mr. Mark Sullivan. In the middle, Marilyn Kelland, Diane Colhane. And on the left, Brian Connor and Sue Spendly. If there is a standing vote, I will ask for the count of the tellers first, then I will ask the tellers to count, and then they'll give me the yeses and nos, and then we'll tabulate the results. If you wish to make a substitute motion this evening or wish to make an amendment to any motion, please prepare that in writing and bring it up to the Clerk. Any speaker uses facts or figures when speaking, please reference the source, and if a source is a document, please have copies available for members. Does the Finance Committee have any opening remarks, Dan? No? Mr. Snuffer, does the Board of Selectmen have any opening remarks? As your Town Moderator, I will encourage open debate and allow everyone who wishes to speak to speak. I will be impartial, and I will make the meeting proceed as efficiently and fairly as possible. As you all are aware, this is my first Town Meeting as Moderator, and I thank you all in advance for your cooperation and assistance. And I'll try not to forget Jim Johnson's name again. All right. Let us now move on to tonight's business. I've been presented with a motion and a second by the Finance Committee to waive the reading of the warrant. This is just an administrative motion that requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor waiving the reading of the warrant, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is a vote. I also have a motion and a second from the Finance Committee to make the Finance Committee's motion the main motion. This also requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is a vote. Now move on to Article One, which is an article that remains open throughout the Town Meeting and allows us to receive reports from committees. The motion reads that the Town hear and act on the report of any committee or to choose any committee the Town may think proper and transact any other business that may legally come before the Town.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
Through you, Cliff Snuffer, Member of the Board of Selectmen and its present Chair. Article One, as many of you know and have worked with over the years, is an article that stays open throughout the entire Town Meeting through that process. We have an interesting thing to present to you tonight, and it will eventually come up under Article Eight, where we will be recommending a no-action vote. Recently, you've been aware of the Turner's Pond issue, and that the dam had been in disrepair shape, and that if we did not get it fixed appropriately, we could be subject to a five-hundred-dollar-per-week fine. One of the things that took place is that we applied for, through the diligence of our DPW and Town Engineering personnel. And last week, a few of the Selectmen, the DPW Director, the Town Engineer, and Town Administrator Jim Johnson and I went to the Town of Situate, where we were greeted by the Governor and the Lieutenant Governor with a very nice two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant. The grant, per Town Council, is not one that needs a Town Meeting vote. However, in the interest of transparency, we do want to bring it up under Article Number One, and I'll give you some of the particulars. In the fall of two thousand and thirteen, this Town Meeting appropriated three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the design and construction of the Turner Dam Repair Project. It was anticipated that approximately one-hundred-eleven-thousand-five-hundred of the funds would be designated for design, and that two-forty-eight-five would be designated for construction. In June of two thousand and fifteen, four bids were received for the construction phase of this project. The bids ranged from six-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-eight to three-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-nine. In July of two thousand and fifteen, we did submit for the grand application of two-hundred-thousand dollars to the Dam Levy and Coastal Shore Protection Repair and Removal Grant, and we were awarded it, and very pleasantly want to announce that. Under Article Eight, you will see it as a placeholder that we had put down, that we kept there, and now requires a no-action, but I needed you to know this under Article One. And through you, Mr. Moderator, thank you for the courtesy.
Thank you. On to Article Two. Motion that the Town raise and appropriate from taxation the sum of one-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-six-hundred-and-three dollars to defray departmental and incidental expenses of the Town for the fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, commencing July first, two thousand and fifteen, and to distribute that amount to the following budgets as follows. Fifty-five-thousand dollars Reserve Fund, forty-two-thousand dollars Town Clerk, and one-hundred-and-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-three Debt Budget.
Good evening. Eric Smargiello, Precinct Five. I wanted to make a motion to divide the question. I have three items here: the Personnel Services, the Reserve Fund, and the Debt Budget.
Do you have that in writing? Do you have your motion to divide the motion?
No, but I can write pretty quick.
You'll need a second on that, too, sir.
or into four? Into three, yes.
Can we have the vote from the FinCom and the Board of Selectmen on the main motion?
FinCom voted 9-1-0. Sorry, favorable action, 9-1-0.
Mr. Moderator, through you, the Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 5-0-0.
And the substitute motion is to divide the main motion into three separate questions to defray departmental expenses of the town fiscal year 2016 commencing July 1, 2015, and to distribute the amount to the following budgets. So it would be one, one question would be to the Reserve Fund, the second question would be to the Town Clerk, and the third question would be to the Debt Budget. That requires a simple majority vote to make the substitute motion the main motion. Any discussion?
Yeah, what's the point? He didn't make a presentation.
He's got a present to make a presentation to explain to us what he wants, why he wants to substitute.
Sir, would you like to come forward?
Yeah. The point is that each one is on its own merits, so there's three separate cost items here, and that's the point.
Mr. Moderator? If I may, in response to the question of why it's called transparency. Yes, sir, your name?
John Valencourt, Precinct Five, through you, Mr. Moderator. I support the motion as a matter of transparency. Each item should stand on its own merit and deserves to be discussed separately by this body, and so I think that we're prepared to do that, so I support it.
Anyone else? So to have the substitute motion take place with the main motion, we need a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's not a vote. So now the main motion is the main motion. So again, the main motion is the town raise, the appropriate from taxation the sum of $199,603 to defray departmental and incidental expenses of the town for the fiscal year 2016 commencing July 1, 2019, and to distribute the amount to the following budgets as follows. $55,000 Reserve Fund, $42,000 Town Clerk, and $102,603 Debt Budget. Any discussion? State your name, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, over our Precinct Four. I'm just, I wish that we had had the opportunity to debate each item separately. However, I do have some questions about the Town Clerk line item. How many hours would the full-time Town Clerk be working?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
Projected, this amount would be 35 hours a week. That's a full-time position here in Town Hall, and of course, you're expected to work much more than 35 hours a week, so it's going to be a full-time salary position.
Okay. Why can't 40 hours be mandated?
The Board of Selectmen could mandate that if they wanted to.
Okay, that's good to know, so we're going to get some new selection. All right, how much of the, so has the Personnel Board approved the Town Clerk job description yet?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
There is a current job description on file. I believe the Personnel Board has brought forward a new one. The Board of Selectmen has not approved that. There is a current one on file, and so the answer is yes.
Okay, but the current one is not for a full-time Town Clerk, right?
No, that is not correct. It is for a full-time Town Clerk. It is on the salary and compensation plan for a full-time Town Clerk. Ron is actually prorated at 24 hours a week.
Have we ever had a full-time Town Clerk?
Mr. Moderator? No, it's my understanding that prior to Ron, who works 24 hours a week, Mr. Hagler was the Town Clerk at, I think it might have went up to 24 towards the end, but he was at 12 before that, and that was 20-plus years ago. We actually did do a survey of other towns that do have a full-time, part-time Town Clerk, and of the 26 towns surveyed, three of them, including Walpole, Randolph, and Stoughton, were part-time. The other ones were all full-time.
What step is the current Town Clerk at in the Personnel Pay Range?
Sorry, Mr. Moderator, I didn't hear that part.
What step is the, in the Personnel Town Clerk pay grade, what step is the current Town Clerk at?
Mr. Moderator, he's at the max range.
Which is how much money?
I believe it's $59,000, $59,639.
So why is that not enough for a full-time Town Clerk?
Yes, Mr.?
Mr. Moderator, I'm actually glad you asked that question. We recently received the preliminary results of a salary survey conducted of 19 other towns, ranging from Norfolk, Norwood, surrounding towns, towns to compare to Walpole, and we're actually right in the range. The midpoint of the range was salary survey, the low point averaged out at $67,000, the low point, sorry, the high point averaged out at $90,700, with a max of $102,000. What you have before you here is a full-time Town Clerk at the max range of, call it $86,000. To be honest with you, I think we need to advertise the high range. If we have a qualified person who has worked in Norwood, Dedham, any other surrounding towns, the Board of Selectmen, that gives them the flexibility to go up to the max range if necessary.
I'm a little concerned about the fact that the Personnel Board, from what I understand, has not had a lot of discussion on this. My understanding is that although there is a job description on file, it needs to be updated and revised to reflect the fact that there's going to be a full-time Town Clerk. It seems like we're sort of appropriating the money before we even know what the position is, and what it's going to actually entail. So I do have some concerns about this, but because it's all as part of this one article, it's difficult for me to vote no, because I don't, obviously, I'm not against putting money into the Reserve Fund and Debt Budget, but I don't really have much choice.
Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, I've asked for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
It is a vote. Just a little housekeeping. Mr. DiTillio, as far as the sound and the microphone, he asks that you not move the microphone to turn and face the crowd, because I guess it interferes with the speakers, and it'll cause a feedback. So if you can try and do that, that'll be great. Article Three. That the town transfer from free cash the sum of $392,372, $372 representing funds received from Medicaid reimbursements for the FY 2016 School Budget. It requires a simple majority vote. Dan and the FinCom?
FinCom voted favorable action 9-0-0.
Board of Selectmen?
Mr. Moderator, Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 5-0-0.
There being no discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is a vote. Article Four. That the town transfer from free cash the sum of $27,000 to the FY 2016 School Budget, representing amounts paid into the General Court Fund for the McKinney-Vento Act. Simple majority vote. FinCom?
FinCom voted favorable action 9-0-0.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 5-0-0.
Any discussion? There being no discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is a vote. Article Five. That the town transfer from free cash the sum of $34,980 for the FY 16 School Budget, representing amounts paid into the General Fund for Student Parking. Again, this is a simple majority vote. And FinCom?
FinCom voted favorable action 9-0-0.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted 5-0-0 favorable action.
Any discussion? There being no discussion? All those in favor of this article, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is a vote. Article Six. That the town transfer from free cash the sum of $100,000 for the purpose of supplementing the stabilization fund as authorized by Chapter Forty, Section 5B of the Massachusetts General Laws. This article or motion requires a two-thirds vote. FinCom?
FinCom voted favorable action 8-1-0.
Board of Selectmen?
Mr. Moderator, through you, the Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 5-0-0, but I would like to make just a slight comment. Relative to stabilization, when our auditors, excuse me, do their annual report to us, they indicate that a healthy stabilization account, and their recommendation traditionally is a 5% of the gross annual budget, this would be about 2.5 or thereabouts percent. It has a balance of $2,013,784, and between stabilization, OPEB, and the negotiated settlements with the unions for the insurance, we have managed, as a town, to take our other post-employment benefit liability from around $80,000, $80 million, down to around $40 million by these actions. Thank you.
Ken Gayet, Precinct Six, RTM and FinCom member. I just wanted to address, if I may, I know we'll touch on each article separately, but I was the lone no-vote on the FinCom on both this and Article Seven, and I just wanted to take a moment to explain why. As Cliff mentioned about the stabilization fund, prior to us discussing this, one of the things we had been discussing was, and we brought it up in Article Two, was the debt budget and what we require in a debt budget to pay for the fire station. And I'm going to ask Mr. Johnson, through you, Mr. Moderator, if he can correct my, or clarify my numbers here, but what we had learned with the debt budget was that to pay for the fire station at this point, we're short in our debt budget, and I believe it was $362,000 in FY 17, $189,000 in FY 18, and $107,000 in FY 19. So when we got to these articles, the way I looked at it was, if I were to take $100,000 out of free cash, where do I get the biggest bang for my buck? And as Mr. Snuffer mentioned, $100,000 at this point would be about 2.5% of where we need to be in stabilization to appease the auditors, maybe bump up our credit rating. But that same $100,000 represents 15.2% of the gap we have in our debt budget to pay for the fire station without an override. And just looking ahead to OPEB, we talked about $50,000 there. And again, I wouldn't even bring this up if we weren't already putting $300,000 in the spring into that budget. $50,000. $50,000 there represents about 1/10 of 1% of our current liability for OPEB, but it represents 7.6% of our gap in the debt budget to pay for a fire station without an override. Along those lines, what I'd like to do is offer a substitute motion that would match the $100,000 we're putting into stabilization with $100,000 from free cash to go to the debt budget. And I do have a second from Mr. Hampton.
Okay, can you present that?
Mr. Moderator, if I may?
Yes.
Could I request the vote of the majority of the FinCom through, through you, Mr. Moderator, to the Chairman of the Finance Committee?
Yes.
Could you repeat the question, Cliff?
Yes, the gentleman is representing the minority vote, the one vote on the FinCom, and I'm interested in what the majority was and perhaps some other helpful dialogue.
Essentially, the, it's, it's something we've been looking at over the years, and with the stabilization fund, the majority vote, again, the vote was 8, 810. So of the members that were present, it was felt that, and it wasn't just that, there was a prior discussion before too, so we discussed this at a couple of meetings, and the majority opinion was that we wanted to continue to build upon our stabilization fund, and, you know, whether it's inching forward or, you know, taking larger steps, that it's important to continue to show to the agencies that look upon us and lend us money that we're continuing to build our stabilization fund. And, you know, at, at the same time too, I'll just mention with the OPEB, the same thing is that we start working on that liability. So, you know, there, there was quite a bit of discussion, Mr. Gaiet expressed his comments, it was all, you know, well-received and understood, but still the majority opinion was, is that was felt that that was the strength we were doing there, because there is funds that are being applied, as we just voted in Article 2, towards improving the debt budget, and the, the funds that were put into there that would be, take us, make some significant strides towards helping to pay for the additional improvements to the senior center and the fire station down the line.
Okay, I've been presented with a substitute motion. Substitute motion states to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer a sum of $100,000 from free cash for purposes of supplementing the stabiliz-
Excuse me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there an opportunity to speak before the vote?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, is there an opportunity for me to speak before the vote for the substitute motion?
There's no motion yet. So there will be time after we make the motion.
Okay.
Okay? Okay. So the substitute motion before you, which will require a majority vote to become the main motion, is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer a sum of $100,000 from free cash for the purpose of supplementing the stabilization fund as authorized by Chapter 40, Section 5B of the Massachusetts General Laws as amended, and a sum of $100,000 from free cash into the debt budget to help cover the costs moving forward for some of the new municipal facilities, or to take any action relative thereto. Any discussion? Yes, what is your point or order? Please approach the microphone.
Mr. Moderator?
Your name, sir?
Mark Chudal, Member of Finance Committee. The mixing of a two-thirds vote and a one-third vote needs to be split, because you're talking about something that's going to stabilize, stabilization requires two-thirds. Anything that's going to deal with the budget would be a straight majority vote. Technically, the substitute motion should be an amendment to Article 2. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator? I believe if you allow me to speak to this just for a couple minutes, I can kind of clarify some issues that were brought up.
Yes, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, Mike, will you go back to Article 3 and click on the item that says FC? What Mike Donovan's bringing up is the free cash, the balances and where we stand for that. I believe when I gave the proposer the information, it was actually a few months ago. That's when we were looking at possibly a 20-year borrowing and only donating or putting in about $500,000 from, into the facility reserve. Currently, if you look right there, and I'm sorry I don't have a pointer, I'm projecting $1,150,000 from free cash to go into the fire station reserve account, let's call it that for now. Again, this hasn't been discussed by the Board of Selectmen yet, but that's just where our projections are at. I'm comfortable with the numbers as they are presented. We do have an account that was set up at the last town meeting that had $900,000 in it for the fire station, so we do have an account for the, the item to go in, but I just don't have that account off the top of my head. I'm comfortable the way it stands. Currently, actually, right now, I, I pulled up my, my debt projections, and we're looking at year two, negative $38,000. That's the only year I'm projecting a negative number. And again, I don't have the fire numbers in, I won't have those bids in until probably next spring, maybe summer, so it may be a little early to go ahead and set that aside. I'm hopeful at the fall town meeting, I'll be able to give you folks an update and request that you take that $1,150,000 and place it into the fire account that currently has 900. I'm also hopeful that the prison mitigation will come in at $750,000 and it won't be vetoed, so we'll also be able to take that and put it in there. So there's a plan in place. The board hasn't been able to approve or go over that, because we're still working through it with our financial team. We also want to send it out to First Southwest, our financial advisors, and make sure, make sure it's a sound plan going forward, and then everything is lined up the way it needs to be. Hope that addresses some of the issues.
Thank you. Yeah, I just had-
Mr. Moderator, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Snuffer.
Could you please rule on the validity of the substitute motion?
I believe that the substitute motion was presented properly before town meeting. So I'll hear it and we'll vote on the substitute motion, whether that's going to be the main motion or not. Yes?
Hi, Anne Rogasta, Precinct 3. I am in support of the substitute motion, because I think we, at town meeting, we worked really long and hard to get the fire sta-, everyone here, I think, has worked hard to get the fire station facilities, the future of it built, and I think any steps that could be made in furtherance of that, so that we would not be presented with a potential override in the future, I, I think the same, perhaps the same money in free cash that would be available in a couple of years could be put forward to, paid down the OPEB, you know, for the future. But I, I think that, I agree with Ken Gaiet, that it makes a, a higher percentage difference, and I would hate to see the fire station, the new fire station, put in jeopardy, because we are still talking a couple of years down the line, and when, when there's a time crunch, when the time comes to put money into it, it would be a shame if we were short.
Mr. Moderator, if I may?
Yes, Mr.?
The, the simple fact of the matter is that the Board of Selectmen has no interest whatsoever in bringing an override question on the fire station to the general populace. We have a very good, solid plan, which will be unveiled in the spring annual town meeting to show that a fire facility savings account, if you will, to use a generic terminology, is in place. No one on this stage has worked harder than myself and the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen in making sure that that becomes the reality. We work very diligently with our bond council, and I can assure you that by putting money in stabilization, we have a tendency to tick up towards a AAA rating, we're presently AA2, and this gives us more leverage in the buying of, in the funding of our process. And I just think that mixing the two is an incorrect phraseology, and the Board of Selectmen will go on record as having no interest in having an override for the fire station. And by approaching stabilization and OPEB, the greatest savings, not these point ones or point twos, was $40 million saved in our liability by taking these prudent actions. Thank you.
I, I just wanted two points of clarification, I guess, on the numbers. You mentioned the $38,000 after you had run the numbers again. My understanding, I think, when we had talked, and I think it was an email exchange, was that was with borrowing over 25 years versus 20? Is that correct?
You are correct. It is over 25 years, and actually, that's one of the reasons I haven't come, come forward with this formally to the board, because I'm not making any promises, but I'd like to see it within 20. And that's why we're reviewing everything and I'm just asking for a little bit of time. This stabilization money is going to help us. They look at, what do you have in free cash? What do you have in stabilization? And it helps. I know it doesn't sound like a lot, but it's going to lift our stabilization up over $2.1 million, so.
Well, and, and that's why the substitute motion actually does not take away from the stabilization, it's simply requesting that we match any funds we put into stabilization along with the debt budget. Because, correct me if I'm wrong, and, and this I don't know, but borrowing 25 years over 20, in addition to paying five additional years of interest, what would that do for our bond rating in terms of, how would they look at that?
Again, I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that. That's why I wanted to send it out to our financial advisors, so.
And the 1.15, 1.1 million that you'd be setting aside, that's actually more than I believe we have, our deficit would be for FY 17, FY 18, and FY 19, is that correct?
Again, it's all preliminary, but even with the 1.15, I still have a, a small deficit of $38,000, and I, I think we're, we're looking at our, our debt and possibly refinancing some of that to reduce the numbers down, so I'm very optimistic we're going to be able to cover that one particular year, and it's actually FY 18, I'm projecting that at now. So it goes 17, I'm plus, plus 18, I'm negative 38, and then 19, I'm plus 28, so.
So, so one final question. Would, would putting $100,000 into the debt budget now make your job easier or harder in terms of doing this?
I think it would make it harder, because I, I, again, they weigh a bunch of factors, and the stabilization helps, it shows that the town, two years in a row, last year we put in 175, this year we're putting in 100, and we're, we're looking forward to investing in, into a rainy day, or, or, you know, putting it into our reserves.
So, so we don't have enough in free cash to do both? Is that what you're saying? Because that's what the substitute motion would do?
Again, I'm sorry I haven't seen the substitute motion. I haven't read it.
Okay, I think he just read it, didn't you? Yeah, Mr. Moderator had just read it, so. But that, that's essentially what it would do, is, is do both stabilization and the debt budget? Thank you.
Finance Committee?
If, if I may, too, I just, one of the other things that came to mind is that the Finance Committee also discussed and debated Article 2, and with that, we put $100,000 into the debt budget at the recommendation of the town administrator. So what we're, what we're doing here is, I, I would think that, you know, we would have discussed and put $200,000 there potentially. I know it was basically applying additional revenues, but the whole thought process came out. So there is money going towards the debt budget already this fall, so, and there's money going towards stabilization. So we try to basically parse the money out appropriately, and also, you know, hang on to some free cash, because we do have the spring coming up where we're going to have additional costs. We have winter coming up, and I won't talk about what that's going to be like, because I'm not a meteorologist, but, you know, we know what last year was like, and all kinds of costs can come out, and it's good to have some free cash balance that's not already appropriated for, to give the town administrator and the department some flexibility in dealing with problems that may arise.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Richard Peeler, Precinct 7. If we don't have all of the answers, if we're still waiting on advice from various consultants, why is this body being asked to make a decision when, when the town administrator does not have all of the information?
If I may, Mr. Moderator? Yes.
The article speaks to stabilization. The confusion is in the substitute conversation.
I beg to differ with, with Mr. Snuffer on that. What is the difference between the substitute motion and the motion, the original motion? If the answers are not available, if, how are we supposed to know what it is that we're actually, our vote, the results of that, with that vote would be?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Johnson.
What the main motion is for is to take $100,000 from free cash and put it towards stabilization.
Correct.
Stabilization is our rainy day account. I'm not getting into the fire station tonight, I was just responding to Mr. Gaiet's questions. Long-term, it's an investment in ourselves, and I believe the motion says raise and appropriate, council's advised me that it's not written correctly?
That's correct. I was going to have Mr. Gaiet come up and just edit his motion.
So it's just for stabilization. That's what the main motion is for.
Yes, sir, are you, reporter, you need to sit in the back. Thank you. That's okay. Just please have the reporter go to the back. All right, so the motion before you is a substitute motion. And it requires a simple majority vote. So all those in favor of having the substitute motion, the main motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
It's not a vote. So the main motion before you is that the town transfer from free cash the sum of $100,000 for the purpose of supplementing the stabilization fund as authorized by Chapter 40, Section 5B of the Massachusetts General Laws. Requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is a vote. Okay, Article 7. Motion that the town transfer from free cash the sum of $50,000 for the purpose of supplementing the fund known as the Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund as authorized by Chapter 32B, Section 20 of the Massachusetts General Laws. This is a simple majority vote. There has been a substitute motion presented by Mr. Gaiet, and the substitute motion, actually, before I go on there, can I have from the FinCom their vote on the main motion?
FinCom voted favorable action 810, and if I may, just throw out the market balance at this time, and these numbers may be off slightly, but 1.693 million. With that, as you know, the, the town voted to have this put into a budget line item, $300,000, so that's part of the budget. The FinCom majority voted to continue- The FinCom majority voted to continue to add supplemental funds to this in the fall. If you refer back, a year ago, we actually postponed making a decision until we actually knew where we stood budget-wise. So kind of consistent with that, we're using the dollars in the fall to help supplement where we can the OPEB budget, and we just felt it was good to stay consistent with that.
And Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 500. As previously indicated, this is prudent. It's appropriate, and it's timed correctly. And again, it has saved us millions of dollars by taking these small actions.
And then, again, there has been a substitute motion presented by Mr. Gaiet. The substitute motion states, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from available funds for the purpose of supplementing the fund known as the Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund as authorized by Chapter 32B, Section 20 of the Massachusetts General Laws, and a sum of $50,000 from free cash into the debt budget account to help cover the costs moving forward for some of the new municipal facilities, or take any other action related thereto. So the substitute motion is before you. Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to withdraw my motion. I don't see the harm in putting an additional $50,000 into the debt budget, but apparently the body's not interested, so I'll withdraw.
You're withdrawing the motion. So the motion's been withdrawn. So the main motion, again, is the town transfer from free cash to the sum of $50,000 for the purpose of supplementing the fund known as Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund as authorized by Chapter 32B, Section 20 of the Massachusetts General Laws. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
It is a vote. If a motion to take no action, Mr. Snuffer, do you wish to talk to this, or?
Just simply to say that this evening, in order to be concurrent with the other motions, we took a motion for no action 400. And we're very proud of our staff for having received this $200,000. And for the interest of transparency, it was done under Article 1.
Okay, so all we need is a simple majority vote. All those in favor of taking no action on Article 8, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It is a vote. Article 9. Hereby move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $155,000 to legally dispose of the PCB and lead-contaminated soils from the property of the former High Plains Street tank site at 193 High Plains Street. Such funds to be expended by the Sewer and Water Commission, and as funding therefore to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow said sum pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 44, Subsection 7, or 8, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes therefore. And further, while such bonds are general obligation bonds of the town, it is anticipated that the principal and interest on such borrowing shall be repaid in full from Water Enterprise Fund. This requires a two-thirds vote. Report of the Finance Committee.
Finance Committee voted favorable action 900.
And the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 500.
Does the Sewer and Water Commission wish to speak to this? Any discussion? Oh, yes.
I guess while John's coming up, can you tell us what the balance is in the Water Enterprise Fund? Because it says here the money's coming from the Water Enterprise Fund, but I think you read that it was being borrowed. Can you clarify that for us, Jim?
It would be a borrowing. This is a continuation of the High Plains Street water tanks we took out, and we found contamination. We got a half a million dollars from the town last year. That was the estimate of what it would take to clean it up. They found PCBs up there. They've used up that money. We still have a couple of old hotspots that are pretty close to being done, and they're estimating $115,000 to finish the project. We owe it to the neighbors to finish this up.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr.?
I have an answer for Mr. Pittman. There's approximately $431,000 in that account.
It begs the question, why not use that versus borrowing?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr.?
We actually kicked around that idea. The concern is that those, the water retained earnings is very low compared to the sewer retained earnings, which has a balance of just around $2 million and change. The concern here is, going forward, if we were to drain that again, which we did last year by taking that 500, it will leave it at a lowering, low rate. If we borrow, we're going to likely ban, which is a short-term borrowing, over three to five years, and we'll pay it back quickly. We won't do a 20-year borrowing on it, so.
Did we, when we did the rest of the project, did we do it short-term borrowing also?
No, we appropriated the whole thing out of retained earnings, the 500.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Joe Monahan, Precinct 1. I just have a question. You know, you're looking for this $115,000. I'm reading these reports that they're finding contaminated soil two, three feet below after they fill them with the clean soil. When they do these perk tests, do they drive them down to find where the clean soil is, or they just assume, let's go seven feet, that should be good enough? Then when we dig it out, have it all getting rid of, then fill it in and find out that, oh, we got to go another three more feet? I mean, this doesn't make common sense to me. I don't know why they don't perk test all the way down and find out, and then come out with a total price, rather than all of a sudden do this, and then, oh, jeez, we got to go down, we got to dig it all out, spend another $20,000, $30,000 or more, and then we got to dig another two, three feet? That makes no sense at all to me. And this seems to be going on a lot. That's how I feel.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Fascinating Precinct 3 and Sewer and Water Commission. Actually, what happens is that we, we survey the surface of the soil, of the ground level, and see where the PCBs are. In places where they are, we start to dig. Dig down whatever the engineer says, usually about three or four inches, to see if there's PCBs. Each time, the soil samples are sent to the laboratory. And this goes on and on and on as we go deeper and deeper. We never fill it in until we find clear soil at the bottom of whatever the pit will be. Occasionally, we hit some strange things, like the concrete sometimes gets contaminated, and that has to be removed, and that's one of the reasons why nobody anticipated, you know, the extra $115,000. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one more question on this. PCBs are normally from transformers, are they not?
Have you listened to me?
Yeah.
PCBs are usually from transformers, but in this case, there seems to be no source that we can identify where these PCBs came from, which is kind of an enigma. This place has been a town facility for almost 100 years, so.
Okay, let, let me ask you this. Where else do PCBs come from?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. We have no idea. It could be a dumping, illegal dumping, it could be anything. We don't really know, we can't find out.
Illegal dumping as far as what? How would you get PCBs other than transformers? Could you answer that?
Nobody can answer that.
No? So, okay, okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion on Article 9, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It is a vote. Article 10. Motion that the town transfer the sum of $200,000 for sewer, from Sewer Enterprise Fund retained earnings to be used as an additional funding source for the fiscal year 2016 Sewer Department operational budget. It's a simple majority vote. FinCom?
FinCom voted favorable action 900.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 500.
Any discussion? Mr. Pittman?
The balance on that is two-point something?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
The current balance is $2,88,794. So just take off the 200 there, so it'll be down to 1.8-ish, around there.
And the idea is that this is going to reduce the sewer rate increase?
I'll allow one of the sewer commissioners to speak to that.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. At the rate hearing, the original request was that, I believe it would have been a 12% increase. We recognized that we had a substantial amount of money in the sewer retained earnings account, and it was suggested, could we use a couple hundred thousand to bring that rate increase, the sewer rate increase, down? And that was the reason. So we've already voted that, with the assumption that at this town meeting, the town meeting would approve transferring that $200,000. If we do not vote in favor of this, the Sewer and Water Commission will have to hold a rate hearing to basically increase the rates to offset the $200,000 that we made the assumption that town meeting probably would be in favor of a lower sewer rate.
Is the, is the intent of the retained earnings, as it was with the water, to save this money for capital expenditures?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. We are looking at the potential of doing a sewer project. At a recent town meeting, I believe we voted an amount of money to hire a firm to do a, update our sewer master plan. There are still areas in town that aren't sewed, and so we do want to keep a rather healthy sewer retained earnings account to address those issues.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article 10, please say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? It is a vote. I'd like to take a 10-minute break, since I get some refreshments out back. And if you can be back here, you know, in 10 minutes, that'd be great. Thank you. There was a pair of glasses left out by the National Health Society food stand. They're up here, if you can't find them. Precinct 6 elected Kristen Sarek of 26 Kidderidge Street as the new town meeting member. Thank you, Kristen. Okay, we're on to Article 11. And the motion is that the town vote in accordance with the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 43B, Section 10, to amend Section 6-5 of the Town Charter by inserting the bold text as follows. "The Finance Committee shall hold one or more public hearings on the proposed budget not less than three days prior to the session of the town meeting at which it is to be submitted for adoption, and town meetings shall take no action on the proposed budget unless such hearing or hearings have been held in accordance herewith." This requires a two-thirds vote. Finance Committee, Dan?
Finance Committee voted favorable action 941.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 500.
Open for discussion.
Bill Abbott, Precinct 6, could we just have some information about what the vote was and why we had four opposed?
Sure. I was one of the opposing votes, and I will, and there were three other members, one of which is here tonight, I'm not sure if the other two are. There was one abstention, which was Josette. There was actually a lot of healthy discussion here. I think generally, the committee as a whole understands the rule requirement for the three days to ensure there's ample time to get the, you know, the printed article, the warrant, excuse me, and to go through the articles, and then have an opportunity to come to the committee, the hearing. I will say, at the last hearing, we had four citizens, I think it was, four citizens that came and spoke. I mean, traditionally, those numbers are honestly pretty low. That actually was a good turnout. I think the highest that's been there in my four years was seven, but usually it's three or four, and most of them are repeat attendees. Not to diminish that, but, so what you're doing, and this is my opinion, is that you're potentially postponing tonight's meeting, because for one reason or another, job responsibilities, which we use to support our families, and other matters that may come forward, you know, medical emergencies, there are other things that go on. We're all volunteers, we do the best we can. We don't deliberately miss meetings. We all, we have excellent attendance this, this year so far. And I just personally felt, and I'll let some of the other members speak if they'd like, that to postpone this meeting because we were missing a quorum by remember, and I think it's happened once in the four years I've been, I assume that's maybe one too many for some folks. So that's kind of the summary of that. I don't know if there's any, actually, I know there's some of the positive votes out there, if you want to come up and speak, or on behalf of the positive vote, or if there's anybody else from the, on the negative side.
Mr. Moderator, should the FinCom not show any positive vote speaking, I would like you to refer to me if you would not mind.
Excuse me, I didn't hear the last part?
I would like you to recognize me on the subject if you would be so kind.
Yes, Mr. Snuffer, go ahead.
Thank you. One of the things that, whether or not in a public hearing there are four, or five, or seven that show up, I can give you, because I'm a person who does show up on a reasonably regular basis, to the public hearing. And very many times, those in the audience, albeit them necessarily not in the tens or hundreds, bring up some very cogent arguments. Witness, if you will, the last public hearing that was held by the FinCom. The FinCom- The FinCom elected to reconsider and change a few of their votes because of the arguments that were offered. If that was to be absent, the fact that it was at one time, and then just forced on this body for its consideration, it had to have some penalty, if you will. And that penalty, in order to bring it to a charter change, was that no action on the proposed budget until such a hearing is held. Excuse me. That hearing could be held on the Monday of the town meeting. And this is the way to do it correctly, legally and properly. Thank you.
Ken Gahet, I was a positive vote on this article for FinCom, and I think the thinking in voting for this was that it's not entirely true that the town meeting would have to be postponed. We simply could not vote on the budget-related articles, but as we see in tonight's warrant, there are several articles that you could address that are not necessarily budget-related. I think tonight, we have something like 15 zoning bylaws, and so our, at least my thinking in voting for this, was that it doesn't bring town meeting to a halt, it simply means we have to reshuffle some things potentially until we, until such time we can, as we can have the quorum, and abide by the rule, as Cliff mentioned. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Jack Fisher, Precinct Three, through you, Mr. Moderator, to either a town council or a town administrator. I think we need to make sure the town meeting understands that this is just the first step, and there's multiple subsequent steps that have to be taken for town charter change. Town charter is kind of sacred, and it's not, changes to the town charter should not be taken lightly, and there are multiple steps that have to happen about this, and I think, Jim, if you could address it, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
Mr. Fisher is correct. It comes before this body, and then it will likely have to go before town election in June. It'll be on the ballot there for approval, and then on to the state legislature for them to review and consider. So it is a lengthy process.
All those in favor of the motion on?
Tom?
Yes, Ms. Lawson?
I was one of the people who voted against this, not because I think that we should not have a public hearing, but my concern is that even though this would not permit town meeting to discuss budget items, as I understand it, if we, for whatever reason, failed to have a quorum on the Thursday prior, as happened a number of years ago, we then held a public hearing just prior to Monday of town meeting. But if we did that, I don't think we would be able to consider budgetary issues until a week later, because we couldn't do it then, that Monday night, and then we couldn't do it Wednesday night, because that wouldn't be three days. So my concern with this is that, and this is why I think, and I'm happy that town meeting will get to vote on this, it's really up to town meeting whether they want to be inconvenienced in that event. And if they do, that's fine, and if they don't, I think that, I think it's important to understand that we could all come together, and if there were some issues, like tonight, we have a lot of zoning issues that we could probably consider, but then we couldn't do budget issues on Wednesday either, so we would all have to come back a week later. And my concern would be, would we then have a quorum for town meeting? People make plans, they have vacations, they have other, you know, they have hopefully penned in the Monday, Wednesday, and most of us are hoping it doesn't go to a third or fourth night, occasionally it does. But my concern would be, in this event, even if we held a public hearing just prior to town meeting, if we were unable to have the quorum the Thursday before, we would really be stopped from handling, dealing with budget issues for a full week after that. So if town meeting is okay with that, and wants to be sure that they're, they make, they want to make sure that they plug that eventuality in, should it ever happen, that's fine. But I think that the full implication should be explored and understood before we vote. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Bowen?
Tom Bowen, Precinct Six, Finance Committee member. There are a couple of things here. One, the charter seemed very clear to most of us for decades, that there shall be a public hearing. Somehow, in America, shall is no longer shall, it's maybe. And there's a lot of focus on us, both FinCom and town meeting. How about on the public? The purpose of the public hearing is to give the public their chance for a voice. They may not show, I know when I was on Sewer and Water, I think I had public come to a public hearing once, but that's not even the point, it's to give them the opportunity. And if the opportunity for the public to speak and for us to consider their thoughts before town meeting is too inconvenient, that's a problem. I think we need to adjust ourselves and have a public hearing that actually has a purpose, that we schedule it, we tell people when it will be, and it has meaning. And that's my simple logic on it. Let's have a public hearing, let's have it have meaning, and let's vote on stuff after the public has their chance to speak. Seems simple to me.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Ms.?
For the benefit of the representative town meeting members, if you look at the language here, it also says to hold a public hearing not less than three days prior to the session of the town meeting. The tradition has been that FinCom meets on a Thursday for the public hearing. They also meet on Mondays, and that previous Monday certainly would add to the safety of a quorum. There are 15 members appointed by you, Mr. Moderator, and eight is required for a quorum. I think this is very, very much in the issue of transparency, allowing the public their say, and in the years that I have attended these, their say has changed many of the articles that have come before you.
Yes, Dan?
One thing, we did discuss this too, and I just want to point out, and that was discussed moving into Monday, and if I'm, I'm not 100% certain, but I'm highly certain that the difficulty with the hearing on Monday is the booklet would not be out in time for people to have an ability to review it, and that's that whole printing, it's got to get, we tried to get all our votes in before it gets sent out. You have, actually, if you look at it, Articles 14 through 28 were recommended town meeting, because the zoning board meets after, we had to get it to print, so we wanted to have that hearing before we went and did it. So, you know, we do appreciate the public's input and value the public's input, obviously, into this whole process. So it was more that, I don't think it was a disagreement, as Susan put so well, it was more about, do we want to cancel and postpone because of, and what happened that one time? I know there were a couple of medical issues. Yes, there are 15 members on the board, and that year, we had a number of issues happen to members, whether it was job-related and medical issues that basically caused that. Other than that, I don't think we've ever had, we've never had a problem with a quorum that I'm aware of on a public hearing night.
And one further thing, just so everyone is clear, no one is taking the position that there would not be a public hearing. What we did in that circumstance a number of years ago was we held a public hearing, but we had to give notice for the new date, and so we met, I think it was at 6:30, prior to the town meeting. So I don't think anybody is talking about a situation where if we did not have a quorum on Thursday, there would be no public hearing. It would just be that it would be moved to, as we did last time, the, an hour just prior to town meeting. It's not ideal, but there was opportunity, and frankly, ironically, that time, the room was, we had probably 15 people, where we only had two or three at the meeting where we failed to have a quorum. So I mean, I'm all in favor of the public hearings, I think they're useful and they're helpful. I just think this body needs to think about whether they want to be, make themselves available for three or four nights, if that should happen, and the public hearing was not held on Thursday, but rather was moved to just prior to the opening of town meeting. That's the thing, I just want to make sure people understand the implications.
Any further discussion? Okay, take a vote. All those in favor of motion on Article Eleven, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Think we need a standing vote. Tellers? So all those in favor of the motion on Article Eleven, please stand.
Tellers.
Okay, tellers. They come up and tell me? Okay, everybody else sit down, sorry? Okay, the tellers only. All those in favor of the motion on Article Eleven, please stand.
No, no, just for tellers.
Tellers only. Yep, three, three. Yep. The light's right in my eyes, okay. And those opposed? No?
No, yeah, four.
Someone's not voting? Is that true?
No, I was, I sat down because I was four.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry. So it's four to two. Okay. Now, all those in favor, please stand. Did you get Mr. Snuffer? Okay, on the right side?
Twelve years.
In the middle?
Thirty-one.
Okay, it's okay.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one in the middle?
Hmm? Yes. We just did. All right, so we've got Cliff, that's 32.
32. And the left-hand side?
We have, with Mr. Snuffer, we get 10.
Well, we, okay.
So it's nine, really, because...
Okay, everybody can sit down? All those against the motion, please stand? Left-hand side?
We have one.
Okay, so there was a total of 93 voting. You needed 62 for passage. It was 57, four, and 36 again, so it's, against, so it's defeated. Yes?
I just would like to clarify one thing.
Yes.
Under the charter, Mr. Fisher asked what the process was, I was partially correct. It actually goes to the AG's office first, and then town, town election, so I had it backwards, so, sorry about that, Jack.
Okay, Article 12. That the town vote in accordance with the provision of General Laws, Chapter 43B, Section 10, to amend Section 6-10 of the Town Charter by inserting the bold text as follows. "The Finance Director shall have and exercise all powers and duties of the Town Treasurer and Tax Collector, or the Town Accountant, but not both, as those terms are defined under the Constitution and General Laws of Commonwealth. The Finance Director shall ensure compliance with all appropriate statutes and be responsible for overall management of the town's investment portfolio. In addition, the Finance Director shall effect collection of all accounts due town, direct the town's financial operations, including the duties of Town Accountant, assist the town administrator in the preparation of the annual budget, and report periodically on the financial status of the town to the Board of Selectmen." This requires a two-thirds vote. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted favorable action eight zero one.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action five zero zero.
Any discussion? Yes?
Bill Abbott, Precinct Six, could you just clarify, it says Town Treasurer and Collector, or the Town Accountant, but not both. There's three positions, if we could just clarify what's considered both?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, through you, Mr. Moderator. Currently, the Finance Director also serves as the Treasurer-Tax Collector. It's one person holding, I guess you would call it, three positions. Going forward, we're happy with our current staff, I think Marilyn's doing a great job, and I think Jody's doing a great job in both of their different positions, but this will allow the town to have some flexibility if and when Marilyn ever leaves in the next 20 or 30 years, and allow us to either hire someone who has certification as a Treasurer-Tax Collector, or as a Town Clerk. It just allows us some flexibility. Right now, we can only hire a tax collector to serve as the Finance Director.
Just in the spirit of opposing or abstentions, the abstention was me. I bring it up because the gentleman that came before us on the last vote, I'm not opposed to this, I, I... I merely abstained because I don't like this one-off Town Charter. If we're gonna review the Town Charter, let's review the Town Charter. I think there are some folks here that don't want to open certain pieces of the Town Charter. I don't know why. I've heard it brought up for a while. I know it's a, it's a massive effort, and it requires some voluntarism. But if we're gonna review our Town Charter, let's review our Town Charter and open it all up.
Any further discussion? So this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I'm going to waive the reading of this entire article, so you can read it on the above screen. So I move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to file with the General Court a home rule petition for special legislation as stated on the projector before you. This is a majority vote. And Fincom?
Finance Committee voted favorable action nine zero zero.
Board of Selectmen?
Selectmen voted favorable action five zero zero.
Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, Ted Lynch, Precinct four. I'm a grizzled rookie, but I would like to propose an amendment. Specifically, I think the idea of having three liquor licenses available for issuance at one time is a huge mistake. And I would like to propose an amendment that there'll be a three-year interval in issuing the licenses for downtown. The downtown restaurateurs support all of our sports teams, they support all of our high school programs, and I think right now there are five, maybe six, full-service restaurants in downtown Walpole. If you introduce three, you might expect, based on the tax revenue that's associated, if we're thinking about eighty-five thousand dollars coming from five licenses, that presumes about eleven point three million dollars worth of sales. And if we talk about having sixty percent of that coming from downtown, we would swamp the existing business people. I would propose that we give them the chance to have these things feathered in over a few years at one time, so we're not having, you know, an influx of restaurateurs possibly doing damage to the downtown businesses.
Okay, we need your amendment in writing?
Yep.
And it needs to be seconded? Spell your last name, sir?
L Y N C H.
So the motion has, I think this is a, what do you put, is a substitute motion presented by Mr. Lynch, is to permit the issuance of up to three liquor licenses in the Central Business District, but only after minimal intervals of three years after each new license issues. So, yes, Larry?
If I can have a question at this point, is, just for clarity, Central Business District is downtown, but is East Walpole also considered a Central Business District? You know, the Route two oh four and all that is?
Mr. Johnson, if you know?
It would, it would need to be really defined what, what the, what business district specifically the person doing the motion is talking about.
Well, I'm just, the, the general language of the article as proposed, it says, you know, general, you know, Central Business District, and I just want to make sure that...
Because generally, this specific article is supposed to cover the Route one area too. So I believe Liz can help me here, but I think it needs to be a little more specific. We worked with the state representative from, Representative Kafka and Rogers on this one to write this specifically. So we tried to, to, to cover all our bases on this, but Liz, you want to help me out a little bit?
Sure. Through you, Mr. Moderator. To address your question, East Walpole is not included in the Central Business District. But in response to the substitute motion, I'm a little confused, because the article in and of itself is only proposing three licenses to be designated for the Central Business District, and then two additional to be designated for the Route one highway business corridor. And there is a provision in said article that indicates that said licenses will be marked as non-transferable and would not be able to be transferred to another entity, whether that be a different business, LLC, et cetera, for a time period of three years. So I'm uncertain as to what the substitute motion would really accomplish in that regard.
Mr. Lynch?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator. If, if we're putting any kind of conditions in at all, why don't we put a condition that supports the local businesses? I just think it would be a terrible signal to the people who have these businesses downtown, who support so many things we do in this community, to say, you know what, the panacea for economic development in Walpole is three more liquor-serving establishments. I'm, I'm in favor of it, I use them, but I think we have to feather in over time. It takes people time to get their investments recovered. I just think it's a reasonable halfway step to getting that developed.
Yes.
If I may respond to that through you, Mr. Moderator. The Economic Development Commission has been holding various public meetings in conjunction with the Board of Selectmen and on their own. We've been before the Board of Selectmen twice, and at one of those points in time, we had some of the downtown business owners present at said meeting in support of this very endeavor. And then to go a step further, the Economic Development Commission, as recently as our last public meeting on October thirteenth, we invited all of the current liquor license holders, beer and wine and all alcohol, from everywhere in town, not just Central Business District and Route one, to attend our meeting if they had any questions or concerns about the article. And also, if they did not choose to attend the meeting, they had the ability to submit questions either by phone or in writing, and we've received no negative feedback regarding
I'm gonna rule this amendment out of order. It really doesn't make any sense, it's not logically presented, therefore, I'm just putting it aside. So, the main motion is, the motion that's before you on the, on the board. Any more discussion? Yes, Mr. Oba?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moderator, Oba, Precinct four. I, I do have to agree with the sentiment of the idea that adding alcohol licenses in downtown seems to me to be simply taking, adding more competition for existing establishments. This eighty-five thousand dollars in additional revenue, I'm wondering how much that's gonna be cannibalized from existing establishments. I was also curious, there is a restaurant that's been talked about potentially going into East Walpole at the former clock tower, and under this main motion, that would not be allowed in that area, you know, which I think is important to keep in mind. East Walpole shouldn't necessarily be ignored, because there is some potential there. I'm curious why the Economic Development Committee chose to go with five alcohol licenses as opposed to less than that or more than that.
Mr. Moderator, through you?
Yes, Mr. Johnson.
Just to answer a couple of those questions. East Walpole, that is approved, it wouldn't go away. Unfortunately, that site hasn't been developed, it still is approved. In terms of the other question, what was the second part? I'm sorry. Oh, y five. We, actually, we were advised, originally there was ten on there. We were fifteen at the first try around. So we were advised that five's a more realistic number to get passed through the state legislature. Even with five, that's not a guarantee that it's going to get passed. Again, this is a whole process. Once town meeting approves this, it gets presented to the state legislature. The state legislature's likely going to take eight to twelve months, at the very least, to review and consider this, and they, it's not a given that they're going to grant it.
I'm curious, do, if this eventually gets approved by the legislature, are, is it, is it, is it the Board's understanding that there are people waiting to take these right away? I mean, are all five of these gonna be taken immediately?
There've, there've been parties who've expressed an interest in, in obtaining these. The Board can't give them before we even get it, so, no. But people have said, I'm very interested. Business owners in town and outside of town have come forward and said, we're very interested in it.
Okay. I do have, as I said, I do have concerns about cannibalizing existing establishments, but, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Richard Peeler, Precinct seven. I have to disagree with my, my friend, Mr. Oba, and the gentleman who asked that, that the distribution of those licenses be spread over a period of time. There is absolutely no data that supports that contention. In fact, just the opposite. I can get on with what I do for a living and what I've done over the many years. One, just one example. Twenty-some-odd years ago, I was chairman of the Boston Theater District Association, when we, when that whole area was being redeveloped. At the time, there were five, four or five legitimate food and beverage operations. We increased that to over twenty. In fact, what happened is that the existing restaurants did more in business. Critical mass, when it comes to retail, is one of the essential qualifications of creating a successful venue. Route one does not need support in having more liquor licenses on Route one. Route one is the type of venue that can stand on its own. We have the, an opportunity. As I look around the Central Business District of Walpole, there is so much potential that's not being tapped. And one of the issue, one of the knocks on, on downtown Walpole was that there weren't enough of offerings. There wasn't enough of a reason for people to come, not only from Walpole itself, but surrounding communities. If there was a critical mass of restaurants, watch the other retail uses begin to look, take a serious look at opening businesses in the downtown. I submit, and I'm more than happy to meet with whomever, to really explain how this industry works and what impact it could have. I think I shared this at a, at a charrette at the library, you know, three, four, five months ago. But just the opposite would happen. Every single business, restaurant operation that's in the Central Business District today, if, if there were five more operations, food and beverage operations, to open tomorrow, their business would increase, not decrease.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Kelland, Precinct one. I'm just wondering why we have the language to say three are going downtown. Why did we feel the need to be very specific about three downtown, two on Route one? East Walpole's getting shut out again. I don't understand why we can't leave it open that there's five and not be specific as to where they're going. Not saying we necessarily need something right in East Walpole, but why shut it off?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator. We were advised by our reps at the state legislature that it's more likely to pass if we're specific. It would be highly unlikely that it would pass if we just asked for five blanket licenses.
Then can we throw one in for East Walpole?
Mr. Hassan-Yager?
Hassan-Yager, Precinct one. I'm a member of the commission that created this proposal, and the Economic Development Group just had a function downtown with the restaurants to promote the concept, the synergy of having Restaurant Row, having events, and having enough magnet, retail magnetism to draw people to the CBD for all, a variety of business venues. Chris Walker, the chairman of our commission, did a study, which he presented to the Selectmen. He researched about thirty or forty other towns and their successes, towns like Norwood, and what they've done with additional on-premise licenses such as this in the CBD. It's not just the revenue to the town far as the, the, the tax revenue, but it's also the, bringing more people and supporting more retail sales for other businesses. The, actually, the forecast that they did suggested eight to ten licenses, that was cut back, as Mr. Johnson suggested, to a modest five. And I don't think there's any timetable that I'm aware of that was an overlay to this, that this had to be done within so many days. I think it's under the discretion and guidance of the Selectmen as to how those licenses would occur if they were indeed granted. The only other sidebar, I would say, the previous speaker did make a good point. It's unfortunate, I think if the town planner does the research, you'll find that East Walpole was designated a CBD probably about twenty-five years ago. It's never changed, it's just that it isn't, hasn't been promoted as such. And probably a license at some date in East Walpole wouldn't be a bad idea at all. But the, the Economic Development Commission is made up, the gentleman who's opposed, is made up of downtown business people and who have buildings and stores and tenants downtown, and they were, they're very enthusiastic and supporting this, and they feel it will help attract also the future, the development of the Kendall Building, and bringing businesses in there, and having more residents downtown Walpole, having a venue for them to stay there and shop and spend more money in, in the CBD.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
David Salvatore, Precinct four. Part to allay Mr. Lynch's concerns. When I was campaigning and I walked the parade route with the, the people that were gonna be participating in the parade on Walpole Day, two of the Main Street business owners who have liquor licenses, when they met me, said, more liquor licenses. And if you remember, one of the liquor license owners, Raven's Nest, was looking for a liquor license for Coffee Perch. So he clearly is looking for more liquor licenses in town. My second comment is, I'm just looking at the motion, and it does not say that three shall be for the Central Business District. Is that a problem, or is that, is that, is that, is that...
Yes, Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Moderator. Mike, if you could go... Mike, if you could go at least one slide down. It says, it specifies it in Section One. Nope, keep going, Mike. You're going the wrong way. Section One specifies the areas. It says central business district, Route One Highway Business Corridor.
Okay, so the whole, won't you want to add up there?
It is specified.
Okay. Where is?
It's Article, what, thirteen?
It must be freeze, it must have froze, so, I'm sure they're working on it, but it is specified there.
Yes.
I'm Majewski, Precinct Eight. Originally, my concerns were economic and culture. I can't argue with anecdotal evidence about critical mass. I do think adding more liquor licenses will add competition, but I don't have numbers to back that up. So, my real objection then would be around safety and culture. On Patch.com, we're already sixteenth highest for bars per capita compared to hundreds of towns in Massachusetts, and we're twenty-fifth for access to liquor. And then, when you think about crime, too, I'm a patron of Walpole Co-op, Bank of America. I don't want more drunk people in town when I'm going down the street. I'm only twenty-three, I don't have children in this town yet, but someday, if I do, I'd like to think that this is still a family town, and I don't want my children going down the street of the town center and just seeing a lot of bars and more alcohol. I don't really want that to be the culture that we're known for. We have Patriot's Place that people can go to, and Gillette State Legacy Place, I'm a bit concerned about that. And according to Pew, too, forty percent of state prisoners, at the time of the crime, were under the influence. And I don't want to add potential crime to the town, too. I'm just worried about the culture and the safety. And, and I, I think that there are better ways to add economic development without putting people at risk. A few, tens of thousands of dollars doesn't seem enough, when there's probably going to have to be more police attention, too, that we're going to have to fund. But, but that's just my saying, my concern.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to get some clarification of what Mr. Hassan-Yager said. Is he saying that East Walpole is considered part of the CBD for the purposes of these licenses? I, I don't think we ever fully nailed that down.
Mr. Johnson.
If, if you look up on screen here, it's specified. I actually just highlighted it. It is not. So, East Walpole is not included in there.
So, East Walpole is not, it's CBD? It's not part of the CBD?
No. I'm not talking, just let me clarify. For this article, it's the central business district downtown, where the Ravens Nest, Conrad's is, that general area. And then, it's two out on Route One, and it's not specified, it's just the Highway Business Corridor. So it's not specified to East Walpole. That is not currently included there.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Gallivan.
Thank you. I did want to clarify the whole East Walpole issue. There is currently a license in the hands of the clock tower owner. For a variety of reasons, that property has not been developed yet. But there is a license in their hands, because that site needs, needs a license. So, I just don't want you to think that, and sorry, I'm Mark Gallivan, RTM, Precinct Eight, and Selectmen. That will help with the development of the East Walpole area. So there is a license at some point that will get built out. So, I think there was some confusion over that. It was mentioned, but it was a little confusing.
Thank you. Mr. Gallivan. Yes, sir.
Kenneth Southwood, Precinct Five. Excellent discussion all around. I mean, when we talk about the businesses wanting to grow, such as the Perks Coffee Shop, and bringing in more development. One thing I think we also have to look out here, look at here, and this could be part of the phase-in theory, is that the infrastructure and the parking. If we were to, it would be wonderful to have three people walk in when these licensers of, licenses are approved by the state, and immediately grant them right out and receive the funds that what they're willing to pay. At the same time, we also have to consider, are we taking their money for the license? Do we have the parking to support their establishment that they're trying to open? So that, I noticed that the post office uses the municipal parking lot behind the fire station. Our fire department has grown, the police station is going to move, so we will have more parking down there. But as the downtown business grows, the parking, I think we need, we really, really need to look at that again. We've done a wonderful job with the revitalization downtown. We've gained more access behind the Peter Bar, Peters Barber Shop area, that side of town. And then we have some of the Kendall Lot drifting over to the Kendall Building, which the T also has some control of. So, as far as any economic, any restaurant development in that building, I just think we, as this goes forward, we also have to look at the parking availability and not taking an entrepreneur's money and not being able to provide them with customers' access. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
A couple of points, Richard Peeler, Precinct Seven. If someone has been holding a liquor license, that's what we used to call a pocket license, those are not allowed. You have a certain period of time in which, because those licenses are granted through, by the public, through the respective agencies. If someone is holding a liquor license for a particular site, beyond a certain period of time, that's not allowed. So someone should be looking into that regarding the situation in East Walpole. Second of all, no one is suggesting, what I said before, I wasn't suggesting that we have a row of saloons, taverns. I'm talking about good, family operations with a variety of different cuisines and offerings that would bring in the kind of people that we want in the downtown. And those people, as they're coming into the downtown, become familiar with what the central business district has to offer. And that will encourage other businesses, non-restaurant businesses, to take a serious look at locating businesses there. As far as the parking is concerned, parking is always an issue. But many moons ago, the Longwood Medical Area solved that whole issue of parking by coming up with a signage program where people who were not familiar where, to where the parking spaces were. There were maps, there were larger street signs, there were signage directing people to where the parking is. We have parking in this town, but people who are not familiar with it don't know where it is. So one of the things that economic, the town planner should be looking at is coming up with a parking plan that makes it, that not only identifies where the parking is to support the local businesses, but how to direct people so that they can easily find it and not have a problem. So, there, as I said, this is a subject that maybe most of the people don't want to spend their time, because there's so many articles tonight. All I would encourage is that the leaders and the people of this community really should talk, discuss what they want for their central business district. This could be one of the more, one of the most vital, active central business districts in eastern Massachusetts. And it isn't, and there's no reason for that. And it would behoove all of us to really take a serious look as to how we can really create a dynamic central business district. I would also add, is that when there is going to be that much interest, the values of each property will increase. That means there'll be more tax revenue that will be generated for the town.
Yes, sir.
Valencourt, Precinct Five, also a member of FinCom. Just a couple of points here. So, I reached out to a restaurant and bar owner in Walpole. They certainly questioned whether there's the density in the area to support additional bars. They're not in favor of it. You know, the capital investment can be half a million dollars or thereabouts. Personally, you know, I can observe one bar in the center of Walpole that closed within the past year or so, because obviously there wasn't enough customers to support it. I just look around, I can quickly count about ten or twelve bars in the downtown area, bars and restaurants. So, I think there's enough. All these other arguments that talk about generating more revenue and making it a destination, I don't know. You're going to go to Walpole Center, or you're going to go to Legacy Place or Patriot Place? You know, I don't know if we can compete with these other places. I just think, you know, we're hearing one side more than the other side. I think we should just consider the existing entrepreneurs and, you know, whether any of us want more bars in town. Frankly, the eighty-five thousand dollars in additional revenue, that's a best case when we're generating, you know, a million-one in revenue from these additional bars. Going to take a long time, you know, in my view, for that to happen. So, just for additional consideration. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Any further discussion? There being none. All those in favor of the motion on Article thirteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
It is a vote. Move that the town amend the zoning bylaw, Section Two, Administration Two, Special Permits, A., General Paragraph Two, by inserting the bold text and deleting the strike-through text as follows. Ten copies of the special permit application and ten copies of an accompanying site plan shall be submitted to the town clerk, who shall forthwith transmit nine of said applications and accompanying site plans to the appropriate special permit granting authority, either the Board of Appeals or Planning Board, as the case may be. If the project is subject to either full site plan review or limited site plan review, said site plan shall meet all of the requirements in Section Thirteen of Site Plan Review of the Zoning Bylaw. If said project is not subject to site plan review, then only a plot plan and floor plan shall be submitted to the Zoning Board of Appeals, along with the special permit application and any other necessary plans or documents. This is a two-thirds vote required by General Laws Forty-A, Section Five. Do we have a Planning Board report? Mr. Conroy?
Yes, we do. As a matter of fact, Articles fourteen through twenty-eight are all sponsored by the Planning Board. And Articles fourteen through twenty-seven have been proposed by Building Commissioner Mike Ganovich and our Economic Development, Community Development Director Liz Dennehy. And they can answer any questions, fourteen through twenty-eight, so everybody understands. And we've taken on, because they've decided, since they're new here, they want to make sure that these are readable for most people, understandable. The new, new people in town, they're the new people, and they were stumbling over it. So that's how we got all these articles here. All these articles are pretty much clarifications, so that you can pick up the book and you know what you're talking about. In regards to Article fourteen, the Planning Board, at their October first meeting, voted five-zero-zero favorable action.
Thank you. The FinCom, Mr. Bruce?
FinCom voted favorable action, ten-zero-one.
And the Board of Selectmen?
Mr. Moderator, just as a comment, I'm very pleased to see the resurgence of zoning for the fall annual town meetings. And the, the Board of Selectmen voted favorable action, five-zero-zero.
There being no discussion. All those in favor of the motion on Article fourteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is a vote. Article fifteen. Article fifteen is moved as set forth on the screen in front of you. FinCom, Mr. Bruce?
FinCom voted favorable action, eleven-zero-zero.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action, five-zero-zero.
And Mr. Conroy, the Planning Board?
On October first, the Planning Board voted five-zero-zero favorable action.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Forsberg, Precinct Seven. I agree with the language in the bold print, but I'm not in favor of the six-foot setback in explanatory note number four. I feel as though that should also be ten feet. It really doesn't matter if it's a side yard or the backyard, but it still could encroach on the butters, and it may be like an explanation, or see if the Building Inspector or the Planning Board would be in favor of that.
Mr. Moderator, through you. This is one attempt to move a particular section or a particular definition back into the explanatory notes. The ten-foot setback is there, that's for a rear yard for an accessory structure. We didn't move that. You need to go to the definition section in order to, to obtain the requirements for accessory structures at this point. Previous town, fall town meeting, I believed it was moved out of the explanatory notes. And again, we're just moving at least the height back into the explanatory notes. So we still have the requirement that if your structure or accessory structure is not a hundred feet back from the street, you need to comply with the setback for the particular district. And it's always going to be ten feet in the rear, regardless of the size of the accessory structure. So it's still there, it's just not in the explanatory notes. Hopefully, in the future, we'll be able to bring all of those dimension requirements back into the explanatory notes. But, you know, seeing as there were so many changes, baby steps, we went with the fifteen feet, which is something that we deal with every day for the height, and we chose to, you know, take that first and put it back into the explanatory notes.
Thank you. Any further discussion? There being none. All those in favor of the motion to amend the zoning bylaw on Article fifteen, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It is a vote. Article sixteen. It is moved that the town amend the zoning bylaw as stated and set forth on the screen before you. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted favorable action, eleven-zero-zero.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen, favorable action, five-zero-zero.
And the Planning Board?
On October first, we had the public hearing, and it was favorable action, five-zero-zero.
Any discussion? Yes?
Hi, Jennifer McAndrew, Precinct One. I just have a question about the change in the strike-through of the acreage. I was wondering, what was the reason for the decrease in acreage from five acres to two acres? And I, do you want me to go one at a time? Or, I have a couple of questions.
Sure. Yeah, that's fine, we'll do them one at a time.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, through you. This particular section was added in there. Whether it be two acres or five acres, these are agricultural uses that are protected under Forty-A. So whether you include them or not, an applicant would still have the availability of applying for such a use if they had two acres of land with certain, certain regulations, or if they had five acres of land. So it was just to come to the minimal requirement, which is two acres, which is covered by General Law Forty-A, which is the Massachusetts Zoning Enabling Act.
So does that include, so that comes to my second question. So is this in residential zoning?
Well, if there were two acres or five acres, and I'll defer to Town Council, regardless of where it was located, if it's an agricultural use, under Section, Forty-A, Section Three, which are protected uses in Mass. General Law, it could very well be that it's in a residential section.
And so does this allow for the commercial, so you're talking about orchards, market gardens, nurseries, does this also allow the commercial use on that property for nurseries and gardens, things like that?
Correct. It would be any use or structure there on that particular lot.
Okay. So there's no provisions in this article, then, for the use of pesticides or fertilizers or things like that that would go along with agricultural uses?
I believe that would be covered if it were in our aquifer protection districts under hazardous materials. It would be covered there. If it wasn't in aquifer protection district, building code would then trump. And then, we would defer to the Department of Public Health if, if there were issues such as that.
And just one more question. Would this also allow for the growth of marijuana? Is that considered an agricultural use?
I'll defer to Town Council on that explanation.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Just to go over what the building officialist said, I agree, certainly Forty-A, Section Three does provide exactly as he has stated. And there were recent changes to Forty-A, Section Three, which is why you see the five to the, the two acres. With respect to marijuana, certainly the argument could be made that it's an agricultural use. However, it's a controlled substance, and we certainly see that the Board, the Board of Health, through the Department of Public Health, controls marijuana, both its sale and, and its growth. So, so we do have controls through the Department of Public Health.
Yeah. Those state laws are a little difficult, though, and I'm sure Mr. Carmichael could speak to that. Because when you do have a prescription, it does allow... to that, because when you do have a prescription, it does allow for a certain amount of growth on your property, and it's not specifically quite regulated yet.
Mr. Moderator, through you. The provision that you're talking about where someone has a prescription and doesn't have access to, to a vendor nearby, and they have a note from their physician allowing them to grow enough for their own use, that would not be under the agricultural use exemption, and certainly there are concerns about how that's going to work as we go forward. You know, to date, I haven't heard a lot of issues in that regard, perhaps the chief may have further information on that, but certainly there were a lot of concerns raised when this particular provision went forward after the state referendum came forward, but I have not heard of particular instances where someone is growing it under a prescription where there has been a problem.
Is it mandatory that we decrease from five acres to two acres because of the regulations, or is that a town choice?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Just trying to conform to the change in 48, Section 3. Certainly, 48, Section 3 is, is obviously giving many protections, broad protections to agricultural uses. Certainly, those have been in place for, you know, for decades, and they do increase. When the legislature pays attention to it, they become broader.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. So, the medical marijuana dispensaries are covered under the DPH regulations. In Wallpole, we've already zoned any possibility of medical marijuana dispensaries to be in the industrial zone. So, that would, basically, it would be up on Industrial Road. Additionally, if somebody were to try and put it in an agricultural zone, in order for DPH to issue the registration, it's still gonna have to go through the town, and the town would have to either give a letter of support or a letter of non-opposition to DPH through the applicant that was trying to put it in. And if we didn't do that, really what's gonna happen is DPH most likely wouldn't ever issue the registration in the first place. So, there are some, some regulations and provisions in there that would prevent it if that were to happen, so. Plus, I'm here, and I'm not gonna let it happen.
Thank you, Mr. Carmichael.
Mr. Moderator, I know the issue of the home grows came up as well. The home grow for medical marijuana right now, the, anybody with a medical marijuana card currently can have, that actually qualifies as a hardship cultivation registration until all of the dispensaries are in. So, everybody basically with a card right now also has a cultivation registration for home grow.
Mr. Moderator, I also have a question on 5B, 4P, 4, which would be the live music entertainment restaurants, which would be allowed, would be changed from special permits. I think there could be some issues about that. If, if you had a mixed-use building and you had apartments and condominiums in the same building, and then there would be no control of live music. I think when Finnegan's, before Finnegan's, it was a rebel, and I think the condo owners in that same building had many issues with the live music there. So, I don't have, I'm not really against the live music, but I think there should be special permits by the zoning board on this, just so there'd be some control for hours, for the hours of the music. And I'd like to know the reason why, why the change. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you like to answer that, or?
Mr. Moderator, through you. So, there still is the requirement of licensing through the Board of Selectmen, so anytime somebody proposes live entertainment, they would come to the town, file the application, and each town department that has an interest would actually comment on it, and they would still have to obtain a license to the Board of Selectmen. So, if we felt that wasn't appropriate, we would comment as such, and the Board of Selectmen would vote based on the comments of the town departments.
Okay, so it still has to go through the Selectmen, it has to be approved by the Selectmen, correct?
Correct.
For the, for the live music. Mr. Moderator, I also have 5B, 4R, outdoor amusements, and that was to be changed to allowed, and this was outdoor amusements, and one of the allowed uses there would be go-karts. And I know down in, I think it's Bridgewater, they have a go-kart track, and there's a lot of issues down there with the noise, and I would like to know how that would be controlled without having to apply for a special permit.
Mr. Moderator, through you. Once again, there's, so there'd be the initial site plan, which would still happen here in town, depending on the type of use that was proposed, and then subsequently, outdoor amusements are also controlled through the state. So, climbing walls, things such as that, have state requirements for licensing, which is another level of approval that they would have to go through.
But if the state did approve that, we would have no say, we would have to allow it?
We wouldn't have to allow it. They would still have to comply, and once again, we'd have the Planning Board site plan review that would trigger if they were affecting that land.
But this, to me, looks like a matter of right.
It would be a matter of right, but you can-
So, even if they go through the Planning Board, it'd still be a matter of right, so they would allow it?
A matter of right with regulation. So, you'd still be able to regulate it. You couldn't necessarily prohibit it, but you could regulate it.
Where does it say in regulation?
Site plan review is a type of regulation.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. In reference to 5B, 4C, specifically business being allowed through a special permit zoning, just a simple question, there still is site plan review, is the question?
Correct.
So, this would be, this would be addition to that?
Correct. I'm sorry, can you repeat your question?
The special permit, special permit zoning would be in addition to site plan, site plan review?
If I could just explain, there were many changes in the bylaw and the CBD, which took the power of special permit granting from the Planning Board and moved that power over to the zoning boards. The zoning board will issue special permits in the central business district. So, if that particular proposal triggers any of the requirements in Chapter 13, which is site plan review, such as parking or square footage, you would still have to obtain site plan review or site plan approval, I should say.
Just one more point. So, in business, if you had a 15,000 minimum size lot, yet you're allowing a 20,000 square foot building, it would seem like in retail, that's typically on one floor, so I know that's a no-brainer, but I think there are gonna be some issues possibly with that concerning parking. And that's it.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Conroy?
Couple things, couple notes. One of them is, we talked to the zoning board. We've been doing special permits downtown, and we've had some examples. We're more equipped to do a site plan. We do the bricks, the mortars, the parking. We had a couple of them that came in for live entertainment. One of them was TD's, and one of them was Jalapenos', and we're sitting there with a special permit, no site plan. We've since changed that. So, we're not equipped, like the zoning board is, to deal with special permits unless it was contained with a site plan. So, in agreement with the zoning board, they're more than happy. They said they'd take that back, which I think makes more sense because they're into that more than we are. Regarding parking, parking still is a site plan issue when it comes through the Planning Board, so if they need to park, and they'll have to file with us.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Forsberg?
One more question, Mr. Moderator, on 5B, 5L, the Paula Laundry Copper Cleaning Plant. I don't have a real issue with going from special permit to allowed in the LM District, but I was wondering why there was no size limit to the building put on that, whereas in L, it just says the power of laundry and dry cleaning, but if you went up to K, the printing and publishing, that has a square footage of 5,000 feet. I'm just curious why there wasn't a limit put on that.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. This is, again, simply a change in allowance of use from, I believe, special permit zoning to allowed. And once again, many, much of the LM District is in the aquifer protection district, so any of those uses that would handle chemicals such as dry cleaning would require a special permit through the Planning Board in order to open it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion on Article 16, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
It is a vote. Article 17 is moved as set forth on the screen before you. Requires a two-thirds vote. FinCom?
FinCom voted favorable action 11-0-0.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 5-0-0.
And the Planning Board?
At the public hearing October 1, the Planning Board voted 5-0-0, favorable action.
Any discussion?
Valencore, Precinct 5. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
No one wants to finish the article. So, we have a motion to adjourn in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One more time. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
All right. The ayes have it. I'll see you Wednesday at 7:30. Thank you very much.